Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for a mock city council meeting to demonstrate the Zoom platform that we're using in the city. Before we begin this afternoon's meeting, I would like to go to welcome everyone to our virtual meeting, and I'd like to explain the meeting format. This afternoon, we have our city council members and staff visible on a live video feed. Members of the public have been invited to comment on Wheat Ridge Speaks or in advance of the meeting, or to participate live through a web link, or by calling in on the telephone. All members of the public who are participating live have been muted at this time. When the time comes for citizens' right to speak, we will unmute all of the members of the public, and I will ask you to speak in order based on the first letter of your last name. Further instructions will be provided at that time. When we unmute the public, please keep background noise to a minimum. You may choose to mute yourself through your own device. If you do not plan to speak at all this evening, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. If you do plan to speak this evening, when you speak, please clearly state your first and last name, please spell your last name, and give us your street address for the record. We appreciate your patience with this virtual format. As with our in-person meetings, our hope is that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. Thank you. So I would like to call to order the mock city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for Thursday, April the 9th at 4:00 PM. In just a moment, you will see the American flag come on your screen, and I will ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we would please bring up the flag. If everyone would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would now like to ask the clerk to call the roll of the members.
Sarah Spalding.
Here.
Here.
Ashley Holland. Bridgette DeVorak. Jesse Johnson. Mr. Mayor, all members of the council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Do we have, I will ask for approval of the agenda without objection. The agenda is approved as presented. We are now at citizens' right to speak. If you are a member of the public and wish to speak during our meeting tonight on any on any non-agenda item, or any agenda item that is not a public hearing, we will take comment at this time. The public's microphones have been unmuted now. If you are not speaking, please mute your telephone. I will invite members of the public to speak based on the first letter of your last name. When I come to your position in the alphabet and you wish to speak, please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you to speak. And when I recognize you to speak, please clearly state your first and last name. Please spell your last name and give us your address for the record. Okay, so we are taking public comment now. Is there anyone, a member of the public wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter A through E? Please speak now, and I will recognize you to speak. Anyone wishing to speak whose names begin with A through E? Is there anyone wishing to speak now whose last name begins with the letter F through J? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you to speak. Last names beginning with F through J. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letters K through O? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have someone that's put their virtual hand up in the background, Barb K.
Hi, everyone. My name is Barb Koberdanz, K-L-O-B-E-R-D-A-N-Z, and I reside at 4005 Kipling Street. And I would like to speak on gardening after this.
Please proceed.
I want to thank the city for providing this opportunity, and I also would like to say that it is a healthy way to get your vegetables and to get outside.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you. K through O. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letters P through T? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you to speak. P through T. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight, this afternoon, whose last name begins with the letters U through Z? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you to speak now. Last name beginning with U through Z. I don't hear anyone. We have been through the alphabet, but there's an, I'm going to ask once again, is there anyone out there in the member of the public who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? You may speak now. If you will ask to unmute your phone and ask to speak, I will recognize you to speak.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Please, you're recognized. Please give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Jenny Snell, last name S-N-E-L-L. I reside at 7020 West 35th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I just wanted to say thank you to the council for having these meetings. They're a lot of fun, and also it's a great way to learn how to use the tool.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. I will, I will once again open the citizens' right to speak for anyone, anyone out there who hasn't spoken, who would like to speak on an agenda item or a non-agenda item other than the public hearings. We will take public comment on the public hearings at that time. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak? Please let me know, and I'll recognize you. Okay, I don't hear anybody else, so I'm going to close the citizens' right to speak, and we will move on to our agenda. We do not have any items on our consent agenda, but we do have a public hearing and an ordinance on second reading. And I would like to go to Councilmember Odell to introduce this item. O'Donnell, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. A zone change from residential 2 to horticulture 2 to allow for a Christmas tree farm.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report on this issue?
Yes, Mayor. This is Ally Scheck putting on my planning hat. I can already see that the city clerk is a huge fan of this idea. Yes, I mean, obviously, we're here today to talk about horticulture, and what better use for City Hall than to be a farm for Christmas trees so that folks can celebrate the holidays? Just come on down to City Hall, get your permits, see the judge, get a Christmas tree. And so I think this is a no-brainer. We've come up with a special zone district for this, Horticulture 2, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you very much. I should, I should mention before we start this that this is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to go now, before we have questions of council, I'm going to open it up to a public comment on this public hearing, this zone change request from residential 2 to horticulture 2 to allow for a Christmas tree farm at the City Hall facility. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak at this time? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you. Anyone, anyone, and we're not doing the roll call by alphabet, so anyone from the public who would like to comment on this public hearing, now is the time to comment, and please just ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you now. Anyone would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Michelle Richardson.
I recognize Ms. Richardson. Please continue.
I think Christmas trees make the city smell wonderful, and I look forward to buying my tree with the city of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Just for the record, would you please give us your first name and last name? Spell your last name and give us your address.
Michelle Richardson, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-O-N. I live at 6363 West 35th in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richardson. Nice to have you with us today.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there, a member of the public, who would like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, hearing no more, no more public comments on this. I'm going to open this item up for questions from council of staff on this item. Ms. O'Donnell.
Yeah, I've heard from people in my district that there's quite a few people that don't celebrate Christmas that are wondering what you're going to do for them.
Ms. Scheck, do you have a response on that comment?
Well, I think I'd go back to Ms. Richardson's comment that they just make the city smell really good. And I would, I would think that that would just apply to everybody in that case. I mean, certainly, Christmas trees, not everyone purchases a Christmas tree if you don't celebrate Christmas, although the Supreme Court did rule that these are a secular object in this case. But I do agree that this will make the city smell great.
Thank you. Additional questions of council for staff on this issue? Ms. Spalding.
Yes, I'd like to ask about whether the Christmas trees will be decorated by city staff when we come to purchase those.
Ms. Scheck.
I think that's a great idea, and I'll certainly take that back to staff. I think they'll love it.
Thank you. Additional comments from council of staff on this issue? Yes, Ms. Anderson.
I myself prefer a fake tree over a live tree. Ms. Scheck, what is your opinion on that?
I just don't even know what to say to that. We need to have a talk, Councilor Anderson. We need to have a talk.
Thank you. Additional, before I close the public hearing, are there any additional comments or questions from councilors on this issue? I actually had a question, Ms. Scheck. Now, as part of changing the zoning on this, would we demolish the City Hall building in order to make more space for Christmas trees? Or is this intended to maintain the existing structure that's there?
As tempting as that is, Mayor, I think we would keep the structure in place, and it'll be well-hidden.
Okay.
And camouflaged.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. Ms. O'Donnell.
I'd like to make a motion to change the zone from residential 2 to horticulture 2 to allow for a Christmas tree farm.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? We have a second by Mr. Johnson. Is there discussion on the motion by council? Okay, seeing no discussion, I will ask the, I will ask the councilors to raise their hand if they are in favor of the motion.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to ordinance on first reading. We don't have any, but we will go to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Ms. O'Donnell, would you please introduce this item?
Sure, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 1001-2020, a resolution approving ways residents can start seeds and prepare their gardens for planting during the stay-at-home order.
Thank you. This is a resolution. Ms. Scheck, do we have a staff report on this item?
We do. Thank you. A huge thanks to our incredible Parks and Recreation staff who've put together some great information. I'd like to introduce Beth June, and Beth can tell you more about what she does for the city and is going to kick us off today, and then she's got some other folks to introduce as well.
Perfect. Ms. June, please proceed. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, sorry, disappeared there for a little while.
You're good.
Okay. I'm Beth June. I'm a recreation coordinator with the city of Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation. I know that we're all staying at home right now and doing our part, social distancing, and sometimes we can think about all the things that we wish we weren't doing, and one of them for a lot of people is gardening and getting our gardens ready. We might not have been prepared to be staying in, but we prepared some videos for some ideas of how you can get that going, so. Mine is going to be on starting a garden from kitchen scraps and other items in your home.
Hi, I'm Beth June, Recreation Coordinator for the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you so much for letting me join your meeting today. I am going to be speaking on the topic of starting a garden from kitchen scraps and other things that you have in your home. I first like to start that I'm not a master gardener, but I just want to present on this topic. Thought it was kind of fun, and something that we're doing in our home. So first thing that I wanted to share was how maybe you can start lettuce from a head of lettuce. Let's see, we've got a head of romaine lettuce here, and what you can do is you can cut it off just a few inches from the bottom. We got this at the grocery store maybe a week ago. You can cut it off a few inches from the bottom, add that salad, tacos, whatever you want to do. And what you'll have left is this. You're going to place that in a glass that it can just rest inside of, not actually touch the bottom, and you're going to put enough water in there that it covers a half inch of the actual head of lettuce there. So if you see that, in about two days, you're going to see green leaves start to sprout, and then in about 12 days, it'll be ready for you to take out of here. It'll be enough to maybe add to a salad, I mean, to a sandwich. So not a full head, but you can add that then to your garden. Put that in the soil. You're going to put it in a shaded spot. And when you're growing this inside, though, make sure that it's not in a place where it's heat. So think about lettuce gets wilted in the heat, and that's not what you want to happen. So you're going to keep it in indirect sunlight in, in an area where there's no heat. So that's one thing you can do. You can also get the seeds out of lemons. You can get a lemon and get the seed out of there, and then I have a document that actually shows how to grow a lemon tree from lemon seeds that you can look at to reference. And these are really nice because it has beautiful little white flowers, and it's really fragrant. So we're starting one of those, too. Super excited. Also, we are taking clippings of our houseplants and growing more houseplants. Add some more life to our home. And so this one, we actually got from a neighbor, as you can see, two weeks ago, and now we already have, we already have a root there. And in about two weeks from now, or three weeks, we'll have enough of a root system that we can actually get this in a pot of soil to grow its own little home. But look how pretty that is. I didn't have this plant before. I'm super excited to grow this. And it only actually, it was really small, and so it's just cool to see how much it's grown, too. So more life in our home, as we're all in our homes together. And then also, you can think about starting those seeds. Usually, I don't have enough time to start seeds, and I have to go out and I have to buy vegetable plants that someone else started from seeds. So right now, you can find those seeds that you might have sitting around and get those started. If you don't have seeds, call out to your neighbor and see if they have any seeds. Stay six feet away, but see if they have any seeds that they want to send your way. I have seeds. If you want to find me, I have seeds. And then you can use a flat maybe from last year. You could recycle, upcycle your recycling. Maybe put some holes in the bottom of here for drainage. You can use the lid to drain it on. Also, when you go to the grocery store, get an egg carton that you could use then. This is great because as it grows, then you can actually put these directly in the garden, and it'll compost, so it's perfect. So we're going to be starting seeds here, too. Super excited about that. I'm here to answer questions. Also, thank you very much for giving me a reason to put some mascara on and share some words with some people. So thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to show how much my lettuce has grown. Yeah, and that's just, what, last Friday or last Thursday? So one week, that's how much we've got there, so.
So when you plant it, how deep do you plant it?
I'm still watching a video on that.
Okay.
So you can find that information online.
We'll look forward to having that. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah. So next, I'm going to introduce Holly Parrott from the Botanic Gardens. She has more information on gardening, too, to share with everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Parrott.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity. I did my kind of spiel, and thank you, Beth, for mentioning seeds. Seeds are such a great way to start right now. I did my spiel on native plant seeds, and I've got quite a few in our southern window right now. My husband maybe is a little concerned of where they're going to go because they're getting bigger and bigger, and there's not a ton of room in our south window. But that is what my video is on, and I really do appreciate y'all taking the time to listen. Hi, my name's Holly Haynes, and I've been a horticulturist for many years now. And my husband and I are fairly new Wheat Ridge homeowners and are excited to be part of the community and ready to get involved. So thanks for taking the time to hear me today. What I want to talk to you today about is meeting the locals. And when I say locals, I mean our front-range native plants. So many people don't take advantage of them, but what they offer is year-round interest, and they are stunning and beautiful, and they're a great addition to any yard, any business, any landscape. They are already adapted to our soils, to our climates, climate, so they use less water, they use less pesticides, they use less fertilizers, and most of them are less maintenance. We do not get a lot of water here, as y'all already know, but 16 to 18 inches, they say, a year. And these plants are already adapted to that. So what you end up getting is saving more money on your water bill. Some say up to 50%. If you're replacing part of your turf or some of your non-native perennials with native plants who don't need that water, think of all the money you can save to go spend at, let's say, some Wheat Ridge local businesses, especially during this time right now. You also are going to save on time, so you will have more time to go do things because you don't need to be out in the yard every single Saturday with most natives. We have a lovely yard at our old house that I probably spend a few hours once a month in, and that's about it, which gives us more time to go for a walk at Crown Hill Park, gives us more time to go to the mountains, gives us more time to go to the Criterium and Brew Fest, which we love. So you get more time. You also get more biodiversity. You get more beauty. And biodiversity, a lot of people don't talk about. I have a lovely quote from the famous biologist Edward Wilson. "It is reckless to suppose that biodiversity can be diminished indefinitely without threatening humanity itself." I mean, that's pretty powerful stuff. And it seems odd that you can plant a few perennials, a few shrubs, a local tree, and all of a sudden add more biodiversity to our city of Wheat Ridge, but it's true. And it starts with us, by one plant, by one yard, by one business, just starting to add little by little. There is nothing better, I think, than sitting on my porch in the mornings or evenings and watching the Swallow Tale butterflies come through or the bumblebees. It's just beautiful, and I will tell you, if you have children, you can't beat it. We have plenty of kids that walk by our yard and have to stop and look at all the pollinators. So you definitely get more savings on your water bill. You get more time to yourself, and you get more beauty, and you get more biodiversity. So consider planting some native plants. There are plenty of great sources to get them. There are native plant sales coming up in May, hopefully. If not, I will include a sheet with some of the places to see natives, to buy natives, and to learn more about them. So thank you for taking the time. I really appreciate it. Stay well.
Thank you very much. A very, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate you giving that for, for us.
Thank you so much.
We have one more presentation on gardening. That would be from Robin Eaton. We'll be sharing some more gardening tips then, too. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Beth.
You'll see on this page that you can start, that we've spoken about, and other people before me have spoken about. Since we have a short growing season, we try and start a lot of our plants indoors, if you're more available to that, and then transplant them after the hail season, using my best guess. And you can, like, we can go to the store and buy the plants on the left-hand side, kind of little potted plants that you can insert your seeds to. Or you can make your own out of things laying around the house, like old water bottles and reusable Wheat Ridge restaurant takeout containers. My public service messages today, they use caution when cutting the plastic bottles, such as the two-liter, two-liter bottles. The ends and the caps are a lot stronger and thicker because that's where they come off the machine as being made. So you want to make sure that you have your cap on those bottles. As you can see on the, that little area right there is really hard to cut through, even with a good knife. And keep your caps on the bottles until you're almost all the way through, that'll keep them secured together. With the containers that you use for yourselves, I always try to get to like a piece of aluminum foil or something like that, as it uses drip, because even when you're watering them, you're going to get splashed and sprayed. I know I've gotten in trouble for getting water stains on some of the places around my house. Whichever you prefer, you should make sure that you label each specific seed container that you have. You can see here that we have the bell pepper. We have lemon cucumber and a hybrid cucumber plant. Because what you might think you're promoting sometimes is a pumpkin, turns out to be a cucumber. And that's kind of, kind of hard sometimes during harvest season. What I like to do also is soak some of my root vegetables, beet seeds, pea seeds, and pumpkin seeds to help them jumpstart the planting process. My seeds here are from last year's pumpkins. I also have seeds from corn, cucumbers, tomatoes that I don't have to go to the store for. I can get my seeds started anytime I want to. You can see here that I've already started the planting process outside. I put my peas on the outside so they grow into the vines and fences that I had laid out for them from last year's plantings. You'll see that I also do double duty and not just have one specific growth in a certain area. The beets are mixed in with the peas, so when the peas are done, when it gets warmer, the beets will be in that area almost all the way grown, too, so you can harvest them in succession. I try and mix up a lot of my plants that way. Onions, to the far right, picture onions with cucumber plants. And it also helps to get the soil properly watered. And when you pick one, it helps to aerate the other soil areas, so it loosens up their growth to let more moisture. Don't forget the mulch. I use a lot of potato peelings, anything I have laying around the house instead of throwing in the trash. If it ferments, if it molds, I'll throw it out in the garden. One of the things, you know, good soil, I use a mixture of pea compost and regular soil because where I live in Arbada, it's just clay. Appreciate to live in Wheat Ridge because the soil I used to have down there is dark and fertile, just like the old farmers used to love for the carnations. I use a drip system for my watering, my main gardens. Because I don't want to stand out there as like you go. I don't want to stand out there holding the water wand for an hour and a half. Like I say, with my fertilizer, natural things, pea potato peelings, eggs for the calcium, and Epsom salts. It's a natural magnesium found in, you know, the Epsom salt. It's great for rose bushes. And you can see from my healthy kick tomatoes in the middle that it's great for tomato plants as well. The yellow cucumbers, they love it. And they really seem to blossom along with the tomatillos that I made last year as well. Don't forget the last part of the garden is know where and when and what to plant your, your seeds in. Partial sun, full sun, it really makes a difference. And we, you know, there's also pots, hanging vines, everything that you want to do because you don't, you don't want to make this a task. And it also brings back a lot of things to the old people that used to do in the olden days, no offense, Steve. Canning, you know, my wife started canning. We can everything. But chili peppers, the tomatillos, make our own salsa now, put it away in bottles. So we don't have to go to the store every time we think we're out of something. The apples are able to be froze, peaches the same way. You can freeze them. You don't have to put them in jars or canning. And have fun with it. But remember lastly, that sharing is caring. Exercise caution where zucchinis are concerned. And I hope that you all have great summers and growing seasons. Take care and stay healthy. Support those bees.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eaton. That was a really fascinating, you're obvious, you're obviously a very well-practiced gardener.
Thanks, sir. Well done.
Those of us that get to work with Robin, we get to benefit.
I would, I hope so.
The lemon cucumbers are my favorite.
I'll bring you a jar next time I'm in.
Well, thank you very much for June and Holly and Robin for, Beth, Beth and Holly and Robin for, for those nice presentations. Are there any, we've already had public comment on this and our, and our citizens' right to speak. Are there any questions of councilors for the presentation? Mr. Johnson?
How far apart do pumpkin seeds have to be when you plant pumpkins?
You know, they say three to four inches. I plant mine probably six to twelve in a group. And I transplant them, once they get, it's too close together, I'll transplant those growth sprouts into another part of the garden. So as long as I get them coming up, I don't care how close they are really, just let them come up. And I think last year I had probably sixteen different areas for my pumpkins. As, you know, my nieces and nephews found out, they had to carry them all home, so.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell?
Not a question, but a comment. I just wanted to thank Beth, Holly and Robin for your presentations. I own a home and other than what we planted here when I arrived, which I have beautiful rose bushes, I have done nothing because this is not a skill that I have. So I gained some skills and I appreciate it. And now I know who to come to in the city for help and who I need to be really nice to, to reap the benefits from his garden, Robin.
Christmas trees.
Mr. Vorak?
Yeah, Robin, what do you use to keep the critters out of your garden?
Well, I use a mixture of my barn find, he's a twelve-year-old bull mastiff. I, I use a lot of those plants. You can see some of the plants in the garden areas are marigolds and they're kind of a, a natural insect keeping away because they don't like to smell. They attract the bees, but keep the other pests out of the garden. And we have a lot of birds and bats in our neighborhood, so.
Solid.
Holly, what is your favorite native plant?
Ooh, that's a hard one. I'm growing a lot of grasses right now, little blue stem, which is amazing in the fall. And if you don't want to start with seeds, I know a lot of people don't like seeds. Southwest Garden, I think, is still doing curbside and they have a lot of native plants that'll be available this May.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkpatrick?
When yours have cold weather, like we're going to have in the next ten days, can you start the seedlings indoors? If you do that, does an LED light of a certain type work better? Do the seedlings and so forth want heat or ultra, what is the best bulb to use for that?
Robin, do you want that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't use any special bulbs for my plants. Things you see in the pictures are growing just fine and they're not even in the windowsill. We already have our three-week dessert salad coming up in some of those planting containers. And like I said, they're not in the sun. Any UV light, I think, would probably be better than LED. But there too, you're not going to have them inside very much longer. I wouldn't waste money on a growing plant. If you're going to do them all year long, sure, get your growth facilities going, just like the MJ people do. But right now it's just natural sun and a little bit of water.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussions before we call for a motion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. O'Donnell, may I have a motion on this resolution?
Absolutely. Just need to pull it up. Okay, I move to approve resolution number one zero zero one dash two zero two zero. A resolution approving ways residents can start seeds and prepare their gardens for planting during the stay-at-home order.
And do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Spalding. Is there discussion on the motion? Just raise your hand and I will call on you if you have discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing none, we will, we will go to vote on this motion. All those councilors in favor, please raise your hand. Will the clerk please tally the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much and thank you for that presentation. That concludes our agenda items tonight. I would like to go to official, elected officials matters and I will start first with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I cannot tell you how much we appreciate the effort you put into this, both Tuesday and today. This is going to make it easier for the citizens to do this. I also have to say that in all the places I've worked, I have never seen teamwork like what we see at the city of Wheat Ridge.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Okay, I will go to our city councilors. If you would like to, if you have an official matter that you'd like to tell our citizens about, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Okay, it looks like everybody's ready to move on after this meeting. So I want to, to sort of close by saying, giving my thanks to all of the presenters who, who made presentations today. I'd like to thank our staff for putting together this virtual mock city council meeting. And I'd like to thank the members of the public. We've got several members of the public who's joined us. And I hope you found this informative. And I hope that, you know, what, what we really hope to do is to get, is to get a lot of public input going live on this thing. Because it looks like we're going to be in, in stay-at-home orders for, you know, for thirty more days than we thought we might be. So we need to, to sort of come together and, and get used to this type of format while we're in this emergency situation. And I think we're, I really want to thank the staff and, and, and all of our, all of our employees for the hard work that they've been doing. So thank you all very much. And if there's no, if there's no further business, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.